...meeting of the Bellville Zoning Board of Adjustment for July 5, 2018 will now come to order. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso, Giordano, Casa, Lopez, Lozal, Sheldon, Smith, Alada, Del Garcia.
Here. Will everyone please stand for the flag to the legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, has this notice been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law?
Certification of meaning has not been according to the Sunshine Law.
Good. Uh, let's go through the minutes. Does anybody have any questions on the minutes? Oh, wait a minute. Actually, let's not even do that. No, no, no. You have to swear him in. No, no, you're supposed to swear him in. Much more. We'll swear, we'll swear on all three.
I don't think we...
That's the Bible. That's the other Bible.
No, we don't need, we don't need a Bible here. You can be a little bit more lady.
If you could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I as mine Lopez.
Saliently swear.
Saliently swear.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in a state under the authority of the people.
In a state under the authority of the people.
I, repeat your name.
I, as mine Lopez.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Um, fairly. Uh, thankfully. And justly.
Perform, perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
On the Board of Adjustment.
The Board of Adjustments.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help you God.
So help you God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's do the reorganization. All right. Reorganization, the first order of business for reorganization would be nominations for Chair.
Motion to nominate Jerry Del Garcia.
Second. Nomination and a second for Jerry Del Garcia to continue as Chair. Are there any other nominations? Motion to close the nominations.
Motion to question.
Second to close. Willie and Chris. Chris. Um, all right. Roll call. The Jerry Del Garcia has been nominated and seconded for Chair for the next year.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alada.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes. All right. Now nominations for Vice Chairman. I want to nominate Mr. William Valano.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Nominated and seconded by Mr. Smith. Clerk Colerole, is there any other nominations for Vice, Vice Chairman? Motion to close the nominations.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Giordano, uh, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes. Okay. Nomination for Secretary.
I nominate Gina Chigarelli.
Second.
Nomination made by Mr. Giordano, seconded by Mr. Caruso for Gina Chigarelli. Any other nominations for Secretary? Motion to close the nominations.
Motion to what?
Second.
Okay. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alada.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nomination for Attorney. I nominate Louis Rayco.
Second.
Second, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Any other nominations? None. So, uh, motion to close the nominations. Motion made by Mr. Giordano, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alada.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next, would be recording Secretary.
Nominate Michelle Porter.
Second.
Nominated by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Uh, Mr. Smith. Uh, uh, any seconds? I mean, any, um, other nominations? I'm sorry. Any, I'm doing two things at one time. Any other nominations?
Any others?
Close the nominat-, motion to close the nominations, please.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alada.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes. Uh, nomination for Eng-, uh, Engineer Planner.
Planner.
Combinational, who does both.
I mean, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Caruso makes the nomination, seconded by Mr. Valano. Any, any, any other nominations by members of the board? No. Motion to close nominations? Motion to close made by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alada.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes. You're welcome. No, there are any others? That's it. Well, do we have to make a, uh, motion for the newspaper, I believe?
Yeah. You have to.
Yes. Okay. So you want to make that motion, Mr. Valano, since you'd like to make one?
Well, give me the two that we use now.
You have two?
We use double times, but, uh, it's Starlight.
Double times and a Starlight. That one's going to find my way.
Yes.
Starlight is the second there in case we need some done in a row in a hurry.
I know. That's why I asked.
All right. So motion made by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Caruso. And, and, uh, there's no other nominations to make. So I would close the nominations. Close, motion closed.
Second.
Seconded. All right. Valano and Mr. Smith. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alada.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes. The nomination. Okay. The business being?
May I have a moment, please, sir?
Yes.
Unfortunately, uh, due to a new career path I've taken, um, I'm going to need to hand in my letter of resignation. I know I missed quite a few meetings and, um, I tried to make both happen, but could not do it. Uh, and family, of course, comes first in my, you know, world. So, um, Jerry, uh, and Wood, I would like to, uh, hand in my nomination. I'm sorry. My resignation. Effective immediately. I have to get up.
Okay. So you want to hand it over?
All right. Please accept.
I, I, well, I don't think we can, we can say we don't accept. My, my whole feeling is you've done a great job on this board. I'm sorry to see you go, but like we said, uh, family comes first.
Thank you. And it's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure working with everyone.
And you'll be best.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure I'll see you all around town. And I'm gonna...
Good luck, George.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Take care. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, now.
Good luck.
We'll take a couple of seconds. Okay. Now we will get back to business. And the next order of business is the minutes from the two meetings we had last month.
Motion to approve.
Which one?
The special and the...
I, I think we should vote on each one separately.
All right.
All right. So why don't we do the first one on June 7th?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody wants, any problems with the minutes? Anybody have any problems with? No? Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Caruso. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valano. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Valano.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes. And the next one would be for the special meeting we had, which was on?
June 19th.
June 19th. Any problems with that? Anyone have any problems with those minutes?
No.
None.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have motion to approve?
I'd say motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Alada.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes. Okay. Then, uh, application for adjournment, we have two. I have the letters here. Okay. Uh, I have a, looks like a fax dated July 3, 2018, for JAMSO LLC, also known as Parts Authority, 3337 Rutgers Street, Block 9402, Lots 2, 3, 4, and 5. Ms. Chigarelli, I am writing to respectfully request an adjournment with regard to the above-captured matter. We are requesting that the application for a JAMSO LLC presently scheduled to be heard at the July 5, 2018 meeting of the Bellville Zoning Board of Adjustment be adjourned until the August 2, 2018 meeting. The adjournment is being requested due to revisions to the plans being necessary following last month's meeting, which have not been completed. Actually, there's more than last month. As additional variances have been noted as required, a fresh legal notice will be published and also mailed to property owners within 200 feet as required prior to the next hearing date. In consideration of this adjournment request, the applicant agrees to suspend any and all applicable time limits for municipal action for duration of the adjournment requested. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance in connection with this request. Michael J. Piramali, uh, of the law firm Lucassione and Flamenco. Okay. So, anyone in the audience who is interested in this case, which is, uh, ZB 2017-18, 3337 Rutgers Street, Parts Authority, uh, that is, uh, the applicant is proposing to add retail of auto parts to existing warehouse. Uh, that will be adjourned to August 2, 2018, though prob-, there'll be new notices in the newspaper and to everybody within 200 feet. Okay? Now we have a second. Very good paper. Yeah, that's really good. I mean, oh, and you know what it is? It's underneath. That's what it is. It's underneath. Yeah, we can put it together. Uh, this was a fax sent today, July 5, 2018. Please see attached letter requesting 450 452 Washington Associates LP application, uh, at 352 Washington Avenue. Bellville be adjourned the August 2, 2018 meeting of the Bellville Zoning Board of Adjustment. Okay. Okay, this is requested. And nothing else. Okay, that's, so that, that's been sent.
Is that the waiver of time?
I believe he is, 'cause I, I talked to him today.
I know. I, I don't see it written.
Yeah. Charlie doesn't know. He says, "Miss." I know I talked to Lucassione too the other day, but...
No, but it's not written.
You know, it's in there. Gina, do you have it? The copy of the request, the letter itself, 'cause this is only the cover, it looks like, but it says it's to, it's regarding.
That was the email.
This is good enough.
He's, he's... That's the email that he's telling me.
I only ask if he waived the time.
Huh?
I'm only asking our counsel. Is he waived the time?
If, if this board grants the adjournment, I would suggest to do it with the condition that the time is waived.
I'm, I'm asking if he asked it. We knew, we usually make sure that he asked.
Michael normally asks. He has a standard letter. He normally waives the time requirement. So I hope he's done this time.
I know. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's not in the letter.
There wasn't anything attached to the email. That was the only thing that I heard.
So, but my, my point would be, this time fine, but I would make an appointment, uh, to, uh, ask for the adjournment. They state whether they waived the time, 'cause I don't want to be holding.
I understand what you're saying.
I don't want to be holding back.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
We always do that.
There's other cases older. There's other cases older, but you have to think. Yeah, we've never had a problem with that.
Fuck me. Because we always ask them if they waived the time.
Well, whenever there was that little mistake, we always did it on the condition that the time be waived, otherwise, no. So I think we should...
I prefer, I prefer they, they stick it.
Want to follow up? Want to follow up?
Call tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Yes. Gina, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. So, do I get a, well, I need a motion.
No.
All right. So, anyone who's interested in that case, which is ZB 2017-24, uh, which is number one on our agenda. The applicant is seeking for a variance to renovate the interior of an existing two-and-one-half-story building to a three-unit multifamily building at 450 452 Washington Avenue. Uh, anyone in the audience interested in this? There'll be no further, uh, notice. It's adjourned to August 2, 2018, and there's no further notice either in the newspaper or in the mail, unless there's a change to the application. Then that will be required. Okay, now, and now that we got rid of the applications for adjournment, uh, let's get on with the, uh, first case that we are hearing on the, on our agenda. ZB 2018-04, 548 568 Franklin Avenue, Sound Development LLC. The applicant is proposing to build a mixed-use multifamily and retail on the premises.
I believe, this is good.
Yeah, I believe the notices are good. We went through this, this, today. Well, I'll, I'll defer to, uh...
Gina.
Gina.
To Gina. Yes. Gina, you didn't find any problems with the notices?
No, did not.
Okay, then we may begin.
Good evening. Mr. Del Garcia, first of all, congratulations to Mr. Lopez, to your appointment. Uh, know that, uh, I constructively look forward to finding any of your comments, and, uh, you are sitting on probably one of the finest zoning board of adjustment in state.
Thank you very much.
That having been said...
You want approval now?
Is that when, is that when her approval?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It's my privilege tonight to present to you Sound Development LLC. Uh, my partner is, uh, Mr. Michael Basilo, sitting right, right here behind me. On this fantastic project for the town of Bellville. It is a landmark building as aesthetically pleasing to the eye, as it is tech-savvy and friendly for the person who might be living in this project with beautiful, high-end finishes and space for recreation enjoyment, which we can get into in full detail at the planning aspect should this project be being this, under, uh, under this application. Some of the features that the builder, Mr. Mike Basilo Velver, has sought to include, not by the plan, but I can speak about them. So you know, when I mention tech savvy, he's intends to have key fobs, so that only one fob will be issued per individual that might reside there. Uh, every, uh, parking spot will be registered to the actual apartment. If the person has a car, there can't be, uh, every spot will be numbered. So, uh, everybody will, he will know at any given time if somebody is not in that spot, uh, if not in the correct spot, or if somebody extends their stay. For example, visitor might have, uh, uh, opportunity to use a spot for X amount of hours. If somebody should call in, uh, the, the, uh, Mr. Basilo will know. Actually, I should say, Mr. Basilo, he's resident manager who will be living on-site. We intend for someone to be there at all time. The building will be equipped with security cameras, uh, lobby entrance, elevator still well, roof parking, and, um, in, uh, public or, uh, garden recreational areas. With this having been said, we look forward to presenting this project because it's also at the, uh, the borderline of not being Bellville. So as one enters the town, we will see this magnificent tower on the south side of the project, uh, not towering by height, but just towering by structure. And also, as you leave the municipality, you have a beautiful prominent building, uh, that, that is situated right at the entry and exit of the, you know, the municipality. So that having been said, I'd like to call, uh, the expert, Mr. Steve Caruso, who drafted the plans that have been presented tonight.
Could I just interrupt a couple of things?
Yes.
I understand you're not having your full array of witnesses.
That is correct.
Could you just indicate to the board, so we know, we're going, who you, who your ultimate witnesses will be, so we know what not to ask.
Absolutely. They were in the application. So it's Mr. Stephen Caruso this evening. It will be Mr. Joseph Steiger, uh, Mr....
What's he doing?
Mr. Traffic.
Traffic.
Joseph Traffic.
Expert. Uh, Mr. Charles Yostercorn, probably, if needed, to discuss certain engineering aspects that might be required. He'll be sitting here, but I don't necessarily know. Then I'll bring him up next time. Mr. Paul Baumann, planner, that everybody, he's been before this board on a multitude of occasions. And lastly, I intend to, uh, present to this board a real estate expert that I will be able to name and provide information with within the next 10 days.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is, going through your materials, I noticed that the application indicated that this is, is this a bifurcated application?
Yes, it is.
You still sticking to that?
Yes, we are. So zoning only tonight for the variances.
All right. Well, not just tonight.
Not just tonight.
No.
Okay, but, okay. Just realize that I know the theory behind the bifurcation, but if this board needs other information to make a, to make an informed decision on the variants.
Sure.
Variances plural, they may ask you to present other, other information.
The experts that will be appearing next time, and I believe also, Mr. Caruso, they're available, of course, are, are capable and experts in, in being able to provide, uh, answers to any questions with reference to planning. It's the same team of experts that we intend, intend to use for the planning aspect. So if the board needs clarity on a matter, they are certainly qualified to provide responses.
So what you're saying is you're gonna provide us with a site plan later?
Correct. With drainage, idings, landscaping.
So your planning, your, your planning presentation is next week?
No.
Tonight?
No. We're, uh...
Where's Mr. Val?
The variances, as is indicated in the application.
And what's Mr. Val?
The D variants and the C variances.
And when is Mr. Val?
He's a planner, positive, negative.
When is his, when is his presentation?
Next. Next time we meet. Yes. Correct. Correct. Absolutely.
All right.
Um, also, I called Mr. Corso, licensed architect. I do believe he's been before the board, but, um...
If you could raise your right hand, please. Mr. Corso, with regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I did.
Just state your name and say your last name, please.
Stephen Corso, C-O-R-S-O.
And you're calling him as, as an architect?
Correct.
And you've been before this board before?
I have.
Yes, you have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for you to accept Mr. Corso as an architect. I'm not going to go through his CV. Is that okay?
No, but he's been here before. As long as your license is still going, you're okay.
Are you referring to, uh, exhibits?
Yes. This is a picture of...
Do you want to mark them all now?
Mark them as he goes. That, that would be A1, and then he can describe what it is.
A1. We'll go along. Mr. Corso, you have been retained by Sound Development to work and prepare plans in connection with the project that we were presenting this evening. Am I correct?
Correct.
And you've been on this team of experts, so to speak, for how long approximately?
Uh, over a year, between studying the project and designing it.
And have you had the opportunity to go to the site yourself?
Yes, I've been there many...
More than once, I think?
Yes.
More than twice?
Four or five times.
Thank you. And as a result of those site visits, have you prepared the plans that are, were presented with the application to the municipality?
I did, yes.
And are you familiar with the codes and regulations in order to do that?
Yeah.
Without adding more, and, uh, one other thing, are you aware, I've had the opportunity to meet at my office with some of the Hilton Street neighbors?
Yes.
And are you aware of the comments that I passed along to you regarding their concerns?
Yes.
And were you able to incorporate some of those comments into the, uh, into your project, into the plans?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And you're prepared to give testimony on, on these items tonight?
Yes, and I have drawings that show.
Okay. Thank you. Without further ado, Mr. Corso, please proceed with your narrative.
Um, this is a photograph.
Let's launch it.
Of the existing site. I marked it A1. Um, and it shows the, uh, the commercial building, the gas station on the corner, the, the structures, uh, warm Franklin Avenue and a two-story residential structure on Hilton Street.
Mr. Corso, you're showing the existing site, correct?
Yes, it's the existing site.
Now, please, you're always, because I don't know if they can hear you.
Yeah, this is the existing site. Now, this is an overall, I mean, an aerial picture of the existing site.
A2.
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 This is A2.
Take us through the site, Mr. Corso.
Okay. I marked this A2. Um, I'd also like to pass out smaller, uh, versions of this picture.
Are they the exact copy?
Exact, yes.
Yes, exact.
All right, then you'll mark those A2 as well. When was that picture taken, Rob?
Um, this was a Google Earth picture. It was taken 2016. It's marked right on the photograph in the center.
Now let me ask you a question. I ask these questions so they don't, I don't forget later. There is five lots that you're looking to consolidate into a reverse subdivision, are you correct?
That's correct. One, two, five.
And are all the lots zoned? And are all the lots zoned as RB to fair?
Yes.
Yes.
Including the commercial lot?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You can see our site is on the corner of Hilton Street and Franklin. Towards the south, I guess this is majority of the south, we have the public service right-of-way for the retention lines. To the north, we have the right-of-way of Hilton Street, and then we're on Franklin Avenue. On the other side of Hilton Street is Nutley. There's several commercial buildings, and some have some residences. And then down Hilton Street are mostly single-family and two-family houses. I wanted to show you the existing from above to give you a general perspective of how we have open-air spaces, street right-of-way, public service right-of-way, and Franklin Avenue all around us. There's a lot of light and air around the property. Also, I wanted you to see exactly how this two-story structure that we're tearing down next to all of the other residents on Hilton Street is way out on the front of its property. Very close, it's only about three and a half feet from the property line of Hilton Street.
Mr. Corso, are you referring to that dark structure?
This dark structure right here, if you can see that on here.
To the left of the structure with the tent?
Which is right behind the service station.
Would you also say that's the oldest property on that block?
Yes, I think so.
So is that... I'm sorry, is that one of the five lots then?
Yes. That's... we're tearing that down. And it's very important because that sticks out the most. And it also blocks a lot of the vision and exposure of these houses on the south side of Hilton Street. As you come onto the... We're going to better that with the project. And I'd like to show you an overall view. That same photograph, but prospectively correct, we inserted our building.
That should be A3.
A3.
This is A3.
You have small ones of that though?
I do not know. I'll explain everything right on how. This is A3. And just to remind you of what we passed out, this is the building. It's got a tower. I call it a tower. It's just a full three-story section in a corner. And then a series of other towers or three-story sections around. And the building...
I think we should... we have a small one of that. We should mark that A4. But let's mark that A4, since it's a larger...
Let's go back to a brief reset, Mr. Corso. Can you describe the setbacks in terms of the front yard? How would be impacting on the contiguous of the first neighbor on the right side of Hilton Street?
Yes. I designed the building to fit in to what was around it. And you can see in this illustration very clearly that the building sets back further as you go down on Hilton Street. And it gets much further back than the existing building that we're tearing down. So you can see that you have more exposure to these houses as you come down the street. The other thing is this in and out. And this third floor being as dormer, I mean, as a mansard roof with dormers, gives it a lot of volume, different volumes. And that helps it fit in with all the different things that are going on down the street. You can see that the building, one house is further back, one's forward, then back to you, you get further back again. That in and out sort of mirrors what's happening in the streetscape. So that was a big consideration. The other big consideration is, we have a three-story building when two and a half stories are left. And so what I did was, I made the building have a mansard roof on the third floor with dormers, so a very large proportion of it looks like a two and a half story building. And also, that helps it fit in to the neighborhood because it reduces the scale. I think that a luxury building like this is very appropriate for this corner. It's an entrance to Bellevue. And it has apartment setting, which is good for developers with attractive entries. And the open air of the first floor on three sides helps light and air in and around the property as well as the right-of-ways all the way around it. So that helps ameliorate the effect of the coverage. So you actually have it open all the way underneath except for this front porch. And you have three right-of-ways all the way around. So there's much less of an effect of the coverage being over the requirement. Also, you can see the rendering is accurate as to where we're going to have the air conditioning compressors and the generator and the roof hatch on the roof. They're all set back from property lines to minimize the sound levels by the time you get to the property lines. And we've... I've set them back enough so that by the time the sound of those generator, the generator and those AC units gets to the property line...
The generator, you mean? Building generator?
For the building.
Building generator, common area?
Common area, yes. By the time that sound gets to the property line, it's well below the maximum state standards. Also, the way we have it on the roof, we have a three-foot-high parapet all the way around. And you can see that in this drawing too. This parapet here visually hides all of that equipment. The other consideration when I designed the building is that this section mirrors the streetscape. It kind of continues the streetscape, but it's only 48 and a half feet deep at the widest part. And the building that was here was about 43 feet deep, and then with the attached one-story section, it was 50 feet deep. So I'm attempting to match what happens down the street. The rest of the building is set back further before it comes out. And the distance here is about 40 feet to 45 feet from the property line. So you can see how, and this illustrates it very well, how the building comes along Franklin Avenue, and when it gets towards Hilton Street, it sort of mirrors the effect of the streetscape going down.
One question. With this building that you're tearing down, yeah, right?
Yes.
What's the setback from the side yard right now?
10 feet.
And what will it be?
Six and a half feet.
That's okay. So you say it's better because it's pushed back?
Because it's pushed back further and now...
Rather than, you know, the inside yard, you mean front yard?
It's pushed back from the front, so it gets this building more exposure.
It aligns with the block, is it?
Yes, it aligns with the block. It also is raised up by the first floor. So the light and air go through the first floor of this building next to the neighbor. And then on the third floor, it's set back further. So that further helps the volume that gets closer to that building be reduced.
Let's go back to the A3 for a moment, just so we get a visual of what's there now.
That's the flat-roofed building?
That's the flat-roofed building. It sticks way out to the street. Our building is approximately the same depth right here as it goes next to this one, but it's set further back. So it gives you more of a vision into that structure from the street. And it doesn't block its views.
So if they were looking out the front windows, looking towards the west, they would basically see a blocked wall, correct? Right now?
Right now, they see all blocked wall. The way ours is, it's set back further, so they can see a lot more of the street.
But not necessarily side yard?
Correct. Continue, Mr. Corso.
The other thing about the design is the multiple towers sort of set... It gives it a...
An anchor? An anchor to the building?
Anchor to the building, impressive. And it sets it out to the street, so it kind of presents itself. And which helps in terms of being properly set for attracting renters. And it's a good image, I think, for beginning of Bellevue. It's a very luxurious building. It's going to be brick. And we have a lot of traditional details, with the windows and sills and this trim on door. That makes it very attractive as the first building you see when you come in to Bellevue. Now, I'd like to go over the floor plan of the first floor.
Mr. Corso, is this a floor plan that you worked on subsequent to comments from the neighbors that you heard from him?
Not yet. I want to show you what we submitted first, explain that. And then I'm going to show you how we improved it based on the neighbors' comments. The building is pretty much all raised up except for the retail space in the lobby and some of the stairways and some mechanical spaces at the bottom of the towers. And it was all parking. It had a nice planter along Franklin Avenue.
I'm not interjecting here. Ms. Kermit, are we still having a store on the first floor?
No, we're going to remove that, and I'll get to that in just a little.
So you're going to move it from what's currently shown?
Right. How many changes?
So that's not Kermit?
No, this is what we have.
This is what everybody has.
And I just wanted...
That's the original plan.
Correct.
What I'm saying is, you changed the plan, but that's not the change.
The neighbors have suggested they would be happy if we removed the store. They met with me, my office, and we tried to take heart to their comments. So we're showing you what we've prepared. We're also going to show you, based upon their comments is coming up, what it could look like, should the board want to do it, conditioned upon their requests.
So right now, it's going to stay the way it is. It's then up to the board to decide what you can do.
Well, we're going to propose a better situation, and I'm going to show you that. Right now, we enter on Hilton Street and we exit on Hilton Street. But some of the feedback we got from the neighbors was that it's very hard for them to get out of Hilton Street.
In the morning?
In the morning. So what we wanted to do was take the exit from Hilton Street and put it on Franklin Avenue, which is what we did in this place.
This is now marked A6, A5.
We're up to five. Now, this is the revised first floor floor plan?
Yes.
Revised parking based upon comments that were made.
This is what we're suggesting to take care of some of the neighbors' concerns. So what we did is we closed the exit going back down to Hilton Street. So entering from Hilton Street and exiting onto Franklin Avenue. And because we closed this exit, we have approximately a 20-foot by 25-foot driveway that's coming off of Hilton Street, and that's going to be new green area. And if you look at this drawing...
A6?
This is A3. You can see that we had the two driveways. Now, this one's eliminated. So virtually, the first, I don't know, 80 or 90 feet or so, by about an average of 25 feet deep, is going to be green area. So there's a lot more green area than the actual site plan that was presented shows. That wasn't landscaped or anything. Also, there's an area here at...
When you said green area, what's that mean?
Landscape...
Is that a tree?
Lawn.
Lawn and plantings and benches. I'll give you...
So you're submitting a list?
We're going to have a... we're going to prepare a landscape plan.
A rendering?
And a list of material of what you're about to do?
We can, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll have that on our list.
Tell me what's bothering you.
Exactly.
Yes, Mr. Val.
Bifurcated application, okay? Which means you want us to vote on all the issues first, and then you want to give us a site plan, but you're giving us a site plan. So I don't understand this. You're getting me confused. And then you're changing it also. And we don't have the changes, but you have the changes. You're showing us tonight. Now, I... no, it's just that I like everything all at one time. I know the law allows you to do it separately, but there's another concern. Is this gentleman going to build this project? Or is he just looking to get the approval and then look to sell to somebody? Because we've had a lot of that happen, and that gets us very upset.
Sound Development is no stranger to, first of all, no stranger to Bellevue. They built elsewhere, not projects of this magnitude, but they have built on Jana Rome to family. Hold on a second, I can give you this. They built... In Bloomfield, they have a 14-unit project. They have...
So they were intended to do this themselves?
There's another two, I believe, a two or three family on Wollard Street. So Mr. Basillo and Sound Development have... They have experience building over. They build in Manhattan, but also they do smaller projects. They've done Bellevue, they're in Bloomfield. They have a magnificent project in Bloomfield that will show you the interior, what these suites would look like.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're showing a site plan, I'd like to get the whole thing done at one time.
I think, just let me just... Lots of cases, lots of use variances will bifurcate the case because they don't want to put a really huge effort into the site plan until they know the board is going to approve the use, okay? So, but they have to present something that shows that the site will work. So that's why he's presenting a site plan.
You're not asking for a plan anyway, right?
No, and these could be conditions.
And he's going to show that the site can work, and then he'll come back, and he'll come back with a site plan, but it'll have a better landscape and lighting plan.
And that's what I asked.
That'll...
I don't think that's unreasonable.
But right now, he's going to submit a site plan just to show you that it works on...
I'll just say...
That it fits. You've got to feel comfortable that it works on the site. That's why he has to present a site.
I have more questions for the planner than I do... I mean, I have questions for you, but... I have questions for the planner, what his thinking is, as well as... I was nearly over.
Also, to answer Mr. Val's question, the plans are, I guess, is an evolving process. We did submit the plans that we would like, that my client would like to see approved. But he's very flexible. And we met with one of the neighbors who's in this room right now only on Tuesday of this week. He was also in my office three weeks ago, and then we worked on it. So we're constantly trying to shape this project into something that will accommodate also them. And one of these changes just came up on Tuesday. So we try to put something together, and let's get a visual on it. Then, of course, we'll be more than happy...
So we'll go in more in detail next month, is what you're telling me?
If the board still requires, we can. But the planning aspect in terms of shrubs and those things, we'll show you where it's going to be. We can give you very accurate dimensions.
I think basically what they're looking for is the number... Out of this, they want to know the number units that they're going to get. And then you've got to look at the associated parking and everything else.
And that's why we're looking for...
That's what they're looking for at this point.
Big issue that's come up already is where the driveway is going to go.
Well, not that the entrance is driven.
And now they're changing it to Franklin Avenue.
Yeah, we're going to exit Franklin Avenue so we don't add to the traffic getting out of Hilton Street.
And also pick up a parking spot?
You're going to entrance and exit, correct? Or you're going to have an entrance on Franklin?
No, it's an entrance only on Hilton and exit only on Franklin.
So you had both before on Hilton?
Yes. Yeah, we had both on Hilton. This is a copy for everybody, if you want a copy.
Of this?
Of this.
Yes, that would be very good.
And that was A5? That was A5, right?
A5.
Okay.
But when Mr. Steiger gives his testimony, he's going to have to address the exit block to Franklin Avenue.
Yes, and this was done in conformance with Mr. Steiger's recommendation.
And he asked for approval for the payment?
It's tough getting out of Hilton. It might be just tough getting out. So he's going to give you a testimony, traffic count.
Does this have to be approved by the county planning board or something?
Yes, yes. We're also adding a landscape seating area, a little recreation area here in this corner. And prior, that wasn't really shown because the site plan wasn't finished, but that would have been landscaping, but we're going to have a seating area here.
Do you have one more, Marina, or not?
Do we have any more? We can have all four.
Now, the retail space has been removed, and it's placed...
And it's in a new set of retail?
No, same location.
Same location. We just removed the use of the retail.
The retail is gone?
Yeah.
So it's just apartments?
Yes.
No, it's for the gym.
Well, with accessories, does it have a fitness center? That's accessory only to the apartments?
That's to the building.
Yeah.
So that's a luxury for the building.
Yes.
And Mr. Corso, was that something also that the residents requested?
Well, I was asked to do that by the developer. I guess it... I don't know if you got it from the residents.
So I'll be sure. You have apartments and amenity, I'll call it, for the building, not for the general block.
Correct.
Correct.
The retail space is now bad?
Gone.
And in the same location?
And you're going to want to listen to this?
Yeah.
And we also have in the same location where the retail space was, a little commuter lane. So people can wait for Uber or Cam or somebody to pick them up.
Is this, out of curiosity, pet-friendly, not pet-friendly?
I think they don't believe it's pet-friendly. Is that correct?
So you'll have facilities for pets? That's my question. Will there be, you know, facilities for the tenant to...
Lock the door.
Lock the door, right, rather than, you know, in the neighbor's front yard.
Could be easily...
Yes.
That will come up. It's site planned, but what we're showing you is, yeah, there's a green area here. There's...
It's a whole part of the property. I didn't ask the question. I don't ask it. No one knows. So if they have a facility... So, if they have a facility to take, and if it is a pet-friendly building, okay. I'm not one of those guys, I don't like that building.
And again, my apologies to the chair and to the board members, but we did this again to accommodate...
I did, and I don't think including the neighborhood.
We wanted to bring something drafted tonight to show you what those accommodations would look like. Initially, it was a store, it was my understanding that the town would like to see a store, and, you know, it's Franklin Avenue, and they would prefer, you know, a gym that's not open to the public.
That's what I wanted to ask, is the elimination of the retail area because residents in the area have asked for it to be eliminated?
Yes, yes, they did, yes.
And did they give you a reason as to why they wanted that eliminated?
I believe they, they had some concerns about maybe where these people would park, like the, um... Store, the merch, not the emergency, customers going in to shop, and, you know, if we were providing more parking for them. So they had an issue, they said, can you remove the store? We said, of course, we can use that, utilize that area for a gym, is that correct?
Yes, the center and the commuter lounge.
For a gym for residents only?
Residents only, accessible only by, by fob, as I indicated.
So that would, that would eliminate the second use?
Correct.
Yes.
And also improves the parking situation.
So, I guess my question would be, I guess would be, other than a gym as an amenity, is there anything else that I'm missing?
Yes, the other half of it, Mr. Corso.
The commuter lounge?
Correct.
Yes. We're gonna have a commuter lounge, a part of where the retail space was. Where people can wait for Uber, or for a cab, or for a friend picking them up.
Is that residents only?
Residents only, yes. So the building primarily would be, the use would be in a apartment building?
Again, if we're trying to attract higher-end clientele, and we wanna show off the building, I'm asking, but what would make them come to this building is I'm asking, that's right. And I'm more formally in a higher-end clientele.
Yes, the luxury finishes on the inside, we're gonna have granite countertops, we're gonna have wall tile floors and kitchens and baths. We're gonna have stainless steel appliances, hardwood floors, it's gonna be very nice luxurious finishes on the inside, the bells on the outside. So, the other thing about this change is we were able to add a parking space because we could put three spaces here, and then we added a couple more and eliminated two here, but the net gain is one parking space, so now we have 57 provided, as opposed to 56 onsite.
On site.
Yes. And it also reduces our parking requirement, because now that it's not a mixed use, we use the residential site plan standards for the parking requirement at 1.0.
1.0.
And we don't have the retail use, which required three spaces. And then we added space, so our net gain, in terms of the parking variance, is 12 spaces. We had a, we had an efficiency in terms of the requirement for zoning of 31 before, now we're 19.
So I guess I'll ask the question, how many apartments?
Forty-two. That's this application, and that didn't change. I'll go through the floors and all the...
Yeah, we just, we just have one moment, go back to the parking, because tell us about the parking now that will be added to the Franklin Avenue?
Yes.
And again, on Hilton, because the neighbors are concerned about the Hilton Street parking.
We also are eliminating enough curb cuts on both Franklin and Hilton. Add seven more parking spaces to the area.
You're talking about parking on Franklin Avenue?
Yes.
Franklin Avenue and Hilton Street.
And Hilton.
Well, Hilton Street, I understand, is a problem.
It's a big problem.
It is such a big problem, I believe that they now have parking permits only.
Well, what we're doing is we're making more parking available on Hilton by closing curbs.
Not necessarily for your clients, is what you're saying?
No, for whoever's parking on Hilton.
Parking on Hilton, public property on the curbside.
Right, and same thing on Franklin, the two on Hilton and five on Franklin, in terms of parking, we're adding to the neighborhood because we're closing curbs.
Franklin currently has no parking in that area, because it's a service area.
Well, there's a lot of curb cuts, cars going in and out all the time, so you can't park there. That's exactly why we gained the parking.
The station has driveway aprons, correct?
Wall course.
And those preclude curbside parking on Franklin, is that correct?
Yes, in front of the parking.
And repeat again, so if we were to eliminate those curb cuts and move forward with this new presentation with one curb cut for egress onto Franklin, how many spots have been, no spots being created curbside on Franklin? How many?
Five on Franklin and two on Hilton that we're adding to the parking available in Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Corso.
I have a question. The one building that's being eliminated on Hilton, that has, do we know how many apartments that building has currently?
It's a two-family house.
It's a two-family house?
Correct.
So that's being eliminated, the people who live there, they have parking as well?
They, they don't have any parking on site of it.
Yeah.
So they'd be parking on the streets, so they will no longer, there's no longer people looking at it anymore?
Right, that's another advantage here.
Correct.
So that's less people out there that are parking on that lot.
And you would be two families there, correct?
Right, but, but in your overall usage for, let's say, 42? Like 77 spots?
Seventy-six required.
And you're providing 57?
Fifty-seven being provided.
People who rent the apartments, they'd be entitled to give parking permits to park on Hilton Street too?
No, absolutely not. They have to park on, on site with the number of permit. They have to apply for the parking spot number that corresponds to the unit number.
Let me ask you a question, since you're saying that. Is there going to be a charge for that? Because I'm gonna tell you why. We've had a number of cases in Bellevue, where then when you charge for parking space, they don't wanna pay, and then they wanna go parking on the street, which causes problems in the neighborhood. So technically, are they gonna be assigned a spot, at least one spot per unit that's part of the rents?
He's got to be sworn in.
Oh, yeah, it's gotta be sworn in. All right.
The traffic expert's gonna have a complete overhaul.
Let him finish first.
Yeah, why don't we have...
The architect finish, and then we'll swear in, I think you found it.
Move it up to the second floor. It's part of your middle...
Is it still part of the...
It's A6.
All part of A6.
Well...
This one?
We haven't marked this one yet. This is the original plan.
Do we have this?
Yes.
If we, if we have, if the board has that...
Board has this one, that's the one, just a fifth of the board.
They have the whole set, nothing further to revise, is that correct, Mr. Corso?
Correct. This is the second floor plan of what was submitted, exactly what was submitted. It's a, it's 20, each floor has 12 one-bedrooms and nine studios. All of the one-bedrooms have a separate bedroom, and they have a door that closes it off to privacy. Studios are usually one big open room, sometimes they're an L-shaped, but the studios are open, bedrooms not enclosed at all. And I know there was some concern about bedrooms not being near windows in some cases because of egress. We have a building that's full-strepan, throughout the entire building. Building code, when that's the case, does not require special emergency escape and rescue rooms which are egress rooms. So, what we've done is we've shown basically furniture arrangements in the majority of these studio apartments. And the way that most renters that I've seen like to use them, they like to have the living room areas and the living room furniture by the windows, and the bedroom further from the window, the bedroom furniture further from the window, it is less light. So, and then what we've, what we've done in a lot of cases is where the, is the studio apartments would enter past the bedroom in Hilton, if it was closer to the home. So the fact that the bedrooms need to be at the windows really doesn't apply because we're not required to have egress windows because we have sprinklers, and those studios are really only one big room. And when you see walls, in most cases, they're, they're just movable partitions or furniture as dividers just to indicate and show you how the space arrangements are differentiated. There are some cases where you might have some cabinets that divide the bed area and the living area. In those cases, we still have room for light to get around.
So those partitions on the planes are not walls from floor to ceiling, is that correct?
No, they're usually just three and a half feet high to conceal the couch.
As you said, the whole builder's building's sprinkler?
Whole building's sprinkler. It's in the garage, some parking areas, basement, everything.
Excuse me, Mr. Corso, are there any elevators in this building?
Yes, we have an elevator right near the corner.
It's a little difficult for me to see from this distance, can we just...
Right here.
It's on A2, and it's got the X to the left.
Yeah, on the left-hand corner.
It's like, it's like an X.
So just a single elevator?
Yeah, one elevator is, is...
And you wanna point out the staircases throughout the...
Yeah, there's a staircase next to the elevator, that's for quick access from the lobby, and also a fire stair, and there's two other fire stairs. The minimum required fire stairs are two, we have three. Because of the configuration of building, we didn't wanna have any particular part of a hallway too far from a point where you can go in two directions to get through a stairway.
Just point them out some way, Mr. Corso.
There's a stairway here, a stairway here, and a stairway here.
Thank you.
They basically serve each corridor, because the building is semi-U-shaped, you have the big stairs, basically serving a corridor. Again, because you don't want one corridor that goes too long before you could go in two directions to get to the exit.
A building with this many units only requires one elevator?
That's true.
I'm just concerned that, in the event that that elevator is incapacitated, you people who need ADA accommodations, how are those people going to, if they can't use staircase, someone in a wheelchair or on crutches, how are they going to get in and out of the building if that elevator is disabled for any reason?
That's a maintenance consideration, a lot of times the elevator companies will have people on call 24 hours, and they come right away. And the elevator is definitely sized for, you know, the handicap end for, like, stretcher, they're big elevators now, they're seven, about seven by eight. The configuration of the building is semi-U-shaped, so they're meant to have light, you know, and exterior wall for all the units. On the third floor, it's the same layout, so the only difference is that you can see that around the perimeter, we have a little bit of jogging because that's where the dormers are, which are, some of the walls are behind the roof, and some of the walls are where the dormers and the windows are.
You see, that adds a nice dimension to the facade itself, so it's not above one block. Is that correct?
Yeah, the dormers around the building and the mansard do help the building blend in. It makes the three-story building, as I said, look like a two-and-a-half-story building.
Excuse me, I have a question. On Hilton Street side, on the first floor, on that picture, Hilton Street side, the first floor, are those apartments still there?
No, that's just a, we just closed that off to the garage entrance.
Just windows?
Just windows into the garage. Yeah, it's just that.
All the apartments are on the...
Second floor.
Asking about that, on Franklin Avenue, the way it's designed right now, I know it may change because the entrance has changed from Hilton to Franklin, but a person walking on the sidewalk there would be able to look into the closet?
Yes, yes. There'll be some log plantings here in a planter that's between the columns, and then there's an iron fence above the planter for security, there's a gate. Now, we have the exit from the parking area for cars, that's gonna have a roll-up gate, that's like the iron gate.
So they'd be able to look in, but they wouldn't be able to go in?
Correct. Yeah, and that's the reason for that is we want the light to go in and around the building, and the light in there.
Is that gonna be a key card for the gate?
Yes, everything where you enter will have, that's the same security measure.
And that's also a camera?
Yes.
Unsupposedly, I didn't hear that.
That's also a camera.
Thanks.
Camera.
Cameras, correct.
And then on the roof, you saw a little of that in that rendering, but I have a roof plant. And you can see that compressors are spread out along, the air conditioning units are spread out along the roof, so for proximity to the unit that they serve, each one has its own air conditioning unit on the roof. And the generator is in the living room also, tries to make the sound. And we have a roof hatch for access to the roof for maintenance from, during the stairway. And you can see, this is a 3'6" high character wall, but there's more behind that mansard roof. The, um... The building's all brick, and it has concrete trim, so that it's not like limestone that wears after it's finished under years.
Like lava?
Like lava, yeah, concrete trim. And brick, so it's all the same stuff there.
Will the brick be all the way around the building?
Yes.
So the back won't be something else?
Nope, practically, it's brick.
All sides are brick?
Everywhere, except for where we have the concrete trim.
Right.
And you can see how it gives it a little bit of a traditional flair, concrete trim from lintels and sills up all the way, and on all the openings, and even on the, you know, the base of the second floor of the tower. So it really has a, you know, very pleasant and, you know, permanent aesthetic.
Mr. Corso, you described this beautiful, aesthetically pleasing-to-the-eye structure from the exterior. You also presented some descriptions regarding the interior, but we have a sample to show the board of the type of workmanship that Sound Development does in its typical projects, you know, special projects, the way they do their...
Mark that A6, please.
Let's mark A6.
And what do we refer to this as, representative materials?
Representative materials for the inside, tell the board members where this project is, which town it's located in.
This is on Willett Street in Bloomfield, it actually borders on Roosevelt. But I think most of it's in Bloomfield, so it's a Bloomfield property. You can see that they have very nice fixtures, they have granite or quartz countertops, even in the bathrooms, hardwood floors that are stained nicely, stainless steel appliances. I mean, they have very nice detailed doors, it's not just, it's not just a typical hollow wood doors.
A hardwood floor?
That's a hardwood.
Unsupposedly, I didn't hear you.
Is that a hardwood floor or a floating?
It's a hardwood floor, and we're gonna have hardwood floors. Now, you see what they did in one section of this particular property, they have seating area, landscaped seating area, which is what I call what I'm showing, it's gonna be similar to this, people who go there for reading or just to get out on the outside. You can see they have nice mirrors, they're framed, and from what I understand, we're gonna be, even use the nicer materials in this building, it's gonna be a new start.
I, I have one question, one bedroom versus studio, and the one bedroom does have the washer and dryer?
Oh, they all do, yes.
Even the, even the studio?
They all have washer and dryer right in...
I can see that's right.
Well, it's in the utility room, it's washer, dryer, and the water heater together, and sometimes I just call it utility.
Okay, you have that in the, in the studio, is it?
Yes.
Give them an example, where you want it?
I see, I see it in a one-bedroom.
Up on the studio.
See, I see the studio, you see the studio? I don't see it in the studio.
Here, it says UT here, this is a studio. We have a big walk-in closet in the utility room here, this is the lower right-hand corner. UT is utility room.
Like, that's a one, that's a one-bedroom, yeah.
No, that's a studio. That's, the, the wall between the bed area and the living room area is just a...
What floor?
A low partition or dividing wall. It would just be part of the furniture.
Second floor plan?
Second or third floor plan, the lower right next to the border.
Yeah, it's the same right here. Okay, I got it.
Yeah, if it says UT, that stands for utility room. So they will have one, every unit up to one?
Thank you, Mr. Corso. Would you like to tell the members of the board?
No, that's what...
For Mr. Corso, any additional questions, questioning board members?
I would like to swear in Mr. Hurwitz and Mr. DiLorenzo before we go on, so that way, if there's any questions, they can be getting asked questions, or give a testimony at the same time.
Tell them with regard to this application, do you use for the testimony or about the material? Record from Lorenzo Zoniawasir, Tom Harris, planner and engineer.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry. The picture that you showed of the interior before, I believe was A6, this courtyard that you showed here, this outside area, reading area, referred to it, an area like that on this property would be for only residents only? There would be no access whatsoever on the property to, for...
Correct, it would be only for residents.
The side of the property.
And there's one particular one here that I drew, this, there's a, there's a six-foot wall, a brick wall around the entire property, and we would continue that wall here, so that it was completely private and used only by the residences. This space right here would be the kind of area that we see in this building.
But it would have a white thing, so it would have a brick wall, is that correct?
It would have a six-foot brick wall, yeah, and it had a landscaping around it, it might have a different colored paper, or it might have bluestone, it's going to be a very nice spot.
So what you're saying is the wall on the side would be higher than the wall that's on Franklin Avenue?
Well, yeah, on Franklin Avenue, most of the building is, there's planters, that's not the wall I'm talking about, these, these are planters, and then around the rest of the building, which you can see in here, you can see some of it, is, is a six-foot-high wall, and that comes all the way around the rest of the building, except for this facade and most of this facade. This has the two-and-a-half-foot-high planter with the iron fence on top, and this has the wall with the garage door, and the windows in it that go into, the windows go into the parking area.
So will the wall be away from the building?
Yeah.
Or part of the building?
It's going to be away from the building, it's going to be...
How far will the building be from the wall, that we discuss?
That's different, different areas.
You showed them the site plan, because the building doesn't cover all the parking that, it might be a little bit easier to...
This one here?
Yeah, just, you just outlined, showed them where the building is, because there's parking, that's, not all the parking is under the building.
But see, the building on the left on here, what it over, what it is...
It's a little far, it's...
Here's the building on the left. From the corner, we come up and it jogs in and out, like I explained, to match the street scape on Hope Street, and it comes to here, and this is wall with the building above, and the building above is here, comes to here, and to here, like this, this dotted line, that's the building above. So all of this area is outside of the building. And then there's, there's more here, there's, I think, five feet from the wall to the property there, and that's going to be green with bushes. Here, we're right on the property.
So there'd be a six-foot wall down the parking that's not under the building, and there'd be a four-foot wall on the front, the parking is under the building.
With the fence, I understand.
And then you'd have a gate that's activated by a bomb or something.
Yeah, coming out.
My question of Mr. DiLorenzo was, is this accurate, if you close the sprinkler system, the bedroom doesn't have to be near the windows?
I believe it's right there, but I don't have construction documents until it comes to my office to review it.
When we, in the event this gets proved, I will submit construction documents, it would have to be approved, I just agree with that.
That could be a condition under proof, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the law.
A law.
It's the law, that's the law, yeah, it's the state law.
Mr. Corso, could we go back to the exhibit for the interior work, I think it was A6? If I remember correctly, you said these are from a project that was done by the developer in Field?
Correct, on Willett Street.
The, admittedly, the work is, is beautiful, but I'm looking at the size of these rooms, do you have any idea roughly what square area you're dealing with, this kitchen, and what it looks like, those common...
Yeah, these are larger apartments, these are two...
Eleven hundred square feet.
How much? These are eleven hundred square feet, so they're much bigger than what we...
Much bigger, yeah, that's what I was leading up to, because looking at the site plan, the one-bedroom apartments are only a little over seven, or seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and the studio apartments are just four-hundred-and-sixty square feet, so these are certainly very small, very small apartments.
There's some five-eighties, yeah.
We're presenting this with the types of materials, correct?
Yeah, we're presenting this with the types of materials, not the design, but it will have stainless steel appliances, granite, so...
I also had a question about the reverse subdivision, there are five lot, Jerry mentioned this earlier, there are five lots involved with this project, are all the lots owned by your client, Mr. Lardone?
No, four, I believe four of them are one property to the, on Franklin Avenue to the right.
Four sixty, four sixty-eight Franklin?
And lot one or lot five is not owned by Mr. Lardone, it's another owner, and, and the applicant, Sound Development, is under contract with them as well to purchase that tract, so it's, they're under contract with every, the two respective owners.
That home, that, I think it's a two-family on, on Franklin, four sixty-eight, that's going to be purchased by, by your contractor.
Absolutely, subject to approval, if it goes through.
So he's got an option, I think, so...
If it doesn't go through, he's not buying any of this, I would sue him.
Also, in your project narrative, you may have mentioned back, I'll just read the sentence, "The tract has received environmental clearance from the state of New Jersey."
Yes.
Doc, do you know what the reason was for the need for environmental, what was the history of the...
There were gas tanks, gasoline tanks underneath, normally I believe it was a gas station, I don't think it's a gas station anymore, they had to be removed or sealed or whatever in accordance with the, the DPA regulations at the time, yes.
Those tanks are gone?
Gone, and they have clearance, the property is clean, and we can submit that documentation if it's required.
I remember when they were taken out.
And I believe Mr. DiLorenzo would have the permits in his office.
Thank you.
These are rentals?
Yes.
All rented, yeah?
Correct.
Any other questions, my members of board? Okay, members of the...
I just have one follow-up, regarding the PSEG, is there any documentation regarding the usage of that, I used to live on the PSEG, we used to rent it for X amount of dollars a year, we couldn't, we couldn't build a permanent structure, we were able to apply it in, or a dog, or a railway, I think, is there any thought about that, is that in, in the climate?
Based upon our discussions with our expert engineer, he advises that there, I believe there are three lines running underneath, very close to the property...
You're talking about... You cannot build like that, I know that, I'm saying, you can plant by that land, usually the public service, a garden, or you can, you can put no permanent structures, I understand, is there any thought about putting some kind of, again, dogs on, garden, green space, anything?
That, that's something we can consider.
Absolutely.
I, I mean, I would just require...
I can get information for the next meeting, absolutely. As long as we're not building on it.
You don't, you won't be, you're not allowed anyway, I just know, I always pay the toll rate.
So I want you to...
Thank you.
Dollar a year?
Yeah, dollar a year.
Nice.
And I, I just think, you may need a lot.
About storage, someone has a Christmas tree they want to get rid of, or storing extra furniture, extra clothes, what do you, what do you...
The majority of the people that I rent are, they're normally first-time renters, and they, they are looking for smaller apartments, but I'm finding in, in all the buildings that I'm designing, and people who are using them, that renters are much happier with a smaller space that's brand-new, for the same price as a bigger space that's not brand-new, and they're geared, they're set to that, plus with the internet and all the things that are advantages in general.
That's becoming more of a generational thing, generationally, you know, the younger ones, no, I'm not looking for that, in my experience in the business, it's a generational thing, people my age, I'll say, my age and up want that, want this space, like the young guys in the back, I'm sure they don't need that much space.
They're used to doing everything on the cell phone, that's what space does they need.
Mr. Corso, what are you finding in the course of your professional experience with these kinds of buildings, with luxury finishes, what kind of tenants are coming into using this, or they are being...
I wouldn't know as much as a developer would, but I, what I see is young professionals, millennials...
I would think that he's targeting, you know, trying to draw a little, the people that are going to Jersey City, or Hobart, or New York, you know, whatever, I would love, because we have the, we have the infrastructure, as you know, for the buses, for trains, and I would love for them to come here and not stop at Hobart, you know, as I say.
And our expert will present some testimony on the vicinity bus stop, and all that, personal information.
For me, I have a lot more questions for the next...
Of course.
It's, I'm not going to tell you, it's a beautiful local building, but, you know, I do have it, you know how I am.
You have to remember that the apartments are small, so forty-two isn't that scary.
And one thing is all the same size, of course.
Oh, we have, we have someone's in a soft particular.
Yeah, again, I would say to a council, a lot more questions for a planner, any other thing I did not, refuge, is that the...
Yeah, we have an area for the refuges on the...
Is that, is that, I think you have a company that you know that?
We'll have a private company that will come and they'll use a dump, I mean, a pickup truck to take the trash.
As we imagine, you would do snow removal the same way?
Snow removal, if they can't clear all the parking spaces, you take the snow away.
Sure.
That's how we handle it.
Is there enough space there with the compact parking spaces?
Space for...
For, for, to, to access the refuges area?
Yeah, there's about five feet access right there, and what happens is just a walk-in access, we have a, the team lead, the developers that I work with, have a garbage company that will use a pickup truck, and just a man or two men then come and get, and take the bags right out of the trash, bring the food, and pick the trucks to take them away. And sometimes they have a special-sized can.
These guys don't want to get on the trucks, trust me, they don't want, they don't want to, and when I put the force in, knock it down, and go.
No, we don't, we don't allow them to do that.
To answer your question, Mr. Lardone, my client is very too aggressive and is happy to, to work with, recommendations they, as well as our other experts that will be prepared to testify next time.
I'm just putting out my concerns there.
So anyone, anyone who exclusively uses the elevator would have to come down to the first floor and then go all the way to the other side of the building to dump their garbage, am I correct?
Yes.
Perpendicular way? I'm saying that they use the elevator.
Yes.
I don't want any more questions.
But also, any more questions?
I remember the board.
Oh, yeah, just one question, from Jerry, just a, is there a direct line, straight as a proflight, from the elevator to the dumpster area, or do you have to jog through the underground area to get there?
You have, you have to go around the center part of the...
So there is no, there's no direct line?
No, not exactly direct, it's a little longer, that's pretty hard.
Any other questions, my members, then I'll open it up to the public, the public, now let me explain something to you, you can only ask questions of the witness based upon the testimony given, you cannot give any testimony at this time, so if you want to give testimony on the project, that is at the end, which would be next month, okay? But now, you have a right to cross-examine the witness, but only on questions. Yes, sir, please stand up, come to the front here, and name an address. Because we're videotaping everything, we want to see who talks and who says what.
Sure, Chris Mears, thirty-six Hilton Street, Oklahoma. Our question, pretty much the concern that we have at the base, because we're at thirty-six, we're at the base of Hope Street, our concern is the overflow of water, because...
Sir, that's not part of his testimony.
No, just his testimony, I'm sorry.
Only his testimony, that's it.
They're going to have an engineer...
Then you can cross-examine the testimony of the person who handles that. Yes, Mr. Mafucci, come on up, Mr. Mafucci.
Ricky Mafucci, sixty-one Continental Avenue, I couldn't hear anything, the dumpster area, that is outdoors?
Yes.
And you're going to have a flatbed truck come to pick up the garbage?
No, a pickup truck.
And what kind of dumpster would you use? Not a dumpster bag, with the bags, sorry.
No, they, a lot of times they have smaller containers, they hold maybe ten or twelve bags, and they can wheel those out, pick the bags out, or they could just, that's, I think the engineer would have his own testimony.
And is this going to be in the same area?
Yes, in the same place.
Also in it?
Yes.
And, oh, actually, I wanted to testify to, just curious, bathrooms, stall showers or tubs?
Tubs, I believe, there's tubs everywhere with the shower.
Okay.
Any other members of the public have questions based on the architect's testimony?
Yeah, twenty-five Hilton Street.
Come on up, sir, you have to be in the video.
Okay. I'm Emilio Jengere, twenty-five Hilton Street.
Say it again for me, so...
Emilio Jengere.
Emilio Jengere, got it.
Twenty-five Hilton Street.
I'm concerned about the entrance and the exit when you're going in, which way you're going in, from, from Hilton or from, from...
We're going in to the parking area on Hilton and we're coming out on Franklin Avenue.
I'm over here, because when I come, I go to work, you got a both side coming in and go out, now you got a coming out, and this, you got a more, coming in and go out, maybe put some kind of a ABC, like stop and go, or maybe flashlight or something?
Well, no, the whole thing is, he just said that because of the concerns that the neighbors had on Hilton Street, they changed, it used to be in and out from Hilton Street, and they've changed that, it's only going to be going into the building from Hilton Street. All the exiting they're proposing will be on Franklin Avenue at the other end of the building, nowhere near Hilton Street.
Why can't they make a both entrance, in and out on Franklin Avenue?
Because I understand the residents were complaining about that.
No, he's saying for Franklin...
No, no, for Franklin...
Oh, Franklin Avenue, come in and out from Franklin?
Right.
Well, sir, here's the question, if a person is coming into Hilton and then going right into the building, how does it affect anybody on Hilton Street?
It's going to be, it's going to be traffic, because let's suppose you go in and you got a flat tire, and you got a park at this side, you got to wait for here.
And you got a flat tire.
I mean, if somebody stopped right there...
Sir, let's say there's no flat tire, that's very unusual, let's say the natural, normal day, that's what we deal with here.
You're right, I agree with you, but you got to consider everything.
You know, they are going to have a traffic witness at the next, here, they're going to have a, a traffic expert.
You didn't see this, this is, no, this is, no, this is, this is Brett, no, we did this tonight.
Yeah, you may want to ask the traffic expert next month about, those are good questions for him.
Also, you know what I just talked about, you know, besides this, I live over there and I had to fix some electrical problem, I had to test in my pocket, I went all the way back, and the thing that went on, I never know what it was, BB, it wasn't tested, that this radiation from the line, it picking up the electricity, now if you go up, I don't know, this is a, if you go up, how much radiation will go affecting the people that they live to, you got to consider the people there too.
That live there or live in the building?
No, I know, but my radiation will go through, and plus the line is right next over there, I hope it never happens, because I live there, it's still up, sure up.
So you're saying, you're saying you're being exposed currently to radiation, is that what you tell us?
It is radiation right there, it is, yes it is, yes it is.
And it has, and it has nothing to do with the architect?
I know, but I've considered this...
That's testimony, sir, you have to give testimony at the end, and that would be next month, the thing is only questions based on what he presented here today, that's it. The thing is only questions based on what he presented here today, that's it. That's all, that's all you can ask questions.
How long have you lived there, sir?
How long have you been here?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
Have you ever been tested for radiation?
No, nobody gave. I did it myself by mistake.
So it's not affecting you?
I hope not, but I think it is, because it's cool.
I mean, it's, we gotta end this.
I know, I agree.
I know you gotta end it, but I don't, just besides the point, right?
Nothing to do with the testimony, that is it.
Sir, 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 the whole thing is this. If you're being exposed to radiation, I don't know why you're still living there, but the thing is, it has nothing to do with the architect's testimony.
I know, I said besides the point before, I just said that, but what I'm saying is that I consider what the other people cannot do more dangerous. I, I'm just saying.
Sir, sir, there's, there's nothing to indicate anything about that, and that is not proper testimony right now anyway.
Maybe the engineer could address that.
Maybe the engineer could address that, okay? Yes, ma'am, come, come up. See, the reason we, the reason we do this, I'm gonna tell you why, you might think it's a little strange. The reason we have you come up so you're shown on the camera is for two reasons. One reason is, if there's a member that's gonna participate next month that's not here today, they could watch the videotape. The second reason, in the event that anything like this ever goes to a courtroom, the judge could watch the videotape, and he could compare it with the transcript and know who's doing the talking.
Yes.
Okay, so he's all understand.
Okay, what I, what I, okay, my name, my name is Alanta Jengerelli, from twenty-five Hilton Street. My question is, uh, one is, you are, you say you're gonna build four to a units?
Forty-two.
Uh, and you're only gonna provide fifty-six, uh, fifty-six parking space?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, okay. Uh, where are the other car gonna go?
Um, that's gonna be part of testimony we're gonna hear next, next month.
Because, because.
We have a traffic expert that can go through all the details.
Because we can, like you say, maybe some people they have a one car, we can think like that, we don't know if that's the case. So I think that if you wanna build something so big like that, you should have enough room for people to park. Because four to a unit, that's how you manage building, and yes of them goes through Elsie's. We are residential place, we're not, if it was all like, I'm Franklin, all right, but.
But ma'am, based upon what was said before, you have parking permits on Hilton. You're protected on Hilton.
Yes.
No one here is gonna be eligible for a parking permit on Hilton.
But remember, it's at two AM in the morning that they can park over there. At two AM in the morning to six. Until two AM, they can come in our street.
It is a public street.
It is, yes. So, and you know, it's a deadened street, Hilton, whoever knows, it's a smushy, it's a deadened street. When we have the snow, we can't get out of the street. I mean, this is the honest truth. Our street gets cleaned the last, and we cannot get out. My husband's not gonna work later, and that's the honest truth.
You're saying as the town doesn't plow your street?
The last street we plowed. And before, before they built, uh, the other building, I first thought, they had the property, they used to throw the stone there overseas.
Oh, ma'am, ma'am, that is not technically part of the architect's testimony.
And you'll have a chance.
You'll have to stick to that, and then later on, you can give all the testimony.
Okay.
As long as it's relevant to the case.
I thought we couldn't do that tonight.
No, I said that in the beginning, I explained. Do you have any other questions for this witness?
No, I'm good.
All right, is there anybody else in the audience who has a question of the witness based upon testimony given only? No, okay. You do, come on up, sir. Remember, it's gotta be a question of the testimony.
Question is to that. My next separate question.
Okay.
Thirty-four.
Giuseppe.
A question, ACC or?
ACC.
You are asked.
Thank you.
Thirty-four, no question.
I know, Mr. Corso, thank you.
Now, I want to let it know, this old man, is he gonna give the truth? Forty-two year, right? Do you have any information about this adaptation, where they're gonna go to?
Um, the engineer has that information and.
What? I gotta let you know, no.
No, sir, sir, no, you don't have to let him know now. He said the testimony is from the engineer. You can let the engineer know then, but you can't let him, because he's not the engineer. You can only ask him questions based upon the testimony he gave, not potential witnesses next month. Come back next month and you can ask the engineer, okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions by members of the public? All right, then Marina, you may, or Ms. Perna, you may bring your next witness, I assume.
Mr. Chairman, I'm concluding my presentation.
Ah, well, you were gonna, you were gonna swear her in.
If you, if the board have questions, I present.
Well, they did, that's why.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Pacillo, the board has some questions, and you also need to be sworn in. Why don't you come here?
Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, that you swear your testimony will be the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Michael Pacillo, P-A-C-I-L-L-O.
P-A-C-I?
L-L-O.
L-L-O, could you keep your voice up too, thank you. Now, you're the owner.
I am one of the owners, yes.
Okay, gentlemen, now, what was the question to be asked? Now we have this one, is there any member?
No, I don't care, respectfully, uh, my questions really are more, after a pilot testified, I would have questions of the owner.
Of the owner, but right now you have no questions to know?
Regarding his thought process, and the density, and how many, how we came up with how many units, and what was the thought process? That was going to be my questions. But I'm, I'm, I think I need to be open minded and make sure that I hear the planner's position first, because I'm gonna ask you any questions. That's my.
My question was, and, and I'm gonna follow up on yours, but my question was, you have no intention of getting an approval and then selling the project? You were gonna build the project yourself?
Absolutely, no, zero intention of approvals himself, building it, owning it, keeping it, managing it, you know, hands on, personally seeing over the project, and I would be a project.
Now, now here's the next question. Mr. Milano didn't follow up, so I'm gonna follow up. Did the planner, or is the planner gonna testify? Or let's put it this way, did, did you go to a planner and he came up with the figure of forty-two units? Or did you tell him you're looking to build forty-two units?
It was, uh, form and process, we discussed the building, we discussed the, you know, potential parking, potential parking needs, and it.
Now who would you discuss this with?
With all the professionals, with the entire team.
Okay, who's the one who suggested the forty-two units?
Well, it was like we said, it was a part of a group discussion, and, you know, economically, forty-two units is kind of, you know, where we need to be with the project.
Economically?
Economically.
Okay. So what you're saying is, it was discussed with the group, but you didn't put, you did not propose it to the groups?
No, not initially.
Okay.
It was a.
All right, then we'll, we'll wait until your planner has it all.
See, and I know I didn't follow up.
Any other questions by members of the board?
I have a question, Mr. Pacillo, at any point, do you plan to ask the council for a pilot for this project?
You can't.
It's not a redevelopment.
You can't, that's not a legitimate question, because if he's coming before us to do that, he would have to go to the planning board.
But the area needed to be built.
Right, yeah, exactly.
All right, Brad, a question. Um, what's the minimum, minimum amount of units that you would accept and still go forward with on the property?
We haven't, we haven't had that discussion, you know, I don't know the answer to that, I didn't do it in a second. You know, we, we developed the project thinking that this was appropriate, we didn't think it was appropriate, it was evident, so we have, had not had discussions on production.
And your company directors can justify the units?
I think they can, I think it's a great project, I think that, you know, although there's forty-two units, they're very small units, and we're, we're catering and tailing to a very specific clientele. Our company has developed a brand called Ethos, and Ethos is the way we live and the way we think, and that's like he said, it's not really from our generation, it's the younger generation. But we're also finding that the empty nesters have that same philosophy. It's smaller, it's lighter, it's technology driven, it's, uh, it's community, uh, pro-community, pro-local shopping. So it's, it's, it's a mindset and it's a way of living, and that's kind of the way we develop our building, we develop it for people who would fit that space. It's not, it's not developed for our family, it's developed for.
You realize though, what the density is for that area?
I do.
The architect, maybe, how, how big is this, is this property when you put the reverse subdivision together? Is it over an acre, under an acre, where is it?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's twenty-four thousand eight hundred forty-four square feet, which is more than half an acre.
Two thirds of an acre.
It's almost twenty-five, twenty-four thousand eight forty-four, so almost twenty-five thousand.
I'll tell you how much it is. It's a half an acre.
He's gonna figure it out right now for us? I have a question for you concerning the demographics that you speak of.
Point five seven.
Now, excuse me?
Point five seven. Point five seven.
So it's not even six, it's a little over half, yeah. So technically, what goes on this is maybe six, maybe seven units, that's it.
Someone reported, Charlie, they presented all the, six units we allow, six units allowed now?
Okay, go ahead, what was?
I was, I'm sorry, I was asking, given the demographics that we're speaking of, because it's particular development, they normally tend to walkability cycle, is, is there any, um, space in, uh, the development itself for them to maybe store their bikes, if they like to bike ride?
Um, that's part of, that's actually part of a discussion that we've been having about bike storage and even common bicycles, similar to the Citibank, but rent free. You just can use them as needed, short trips to the store, short trip to the market, ride to CVS. So, yeah, we intend to make available at least a couple of bikes. So they would have, if she could fit it into the plan, we'd like to put some, some bike storage and also some community bikes.
Anybody else have any?
Just one comment, when your planner speaks next month, I'm sure he or she is planning to do this, but please make sure that they address the impact, potential impact on the district school system. I kind of anticipate what that answers, what that answer's going to be already, but in any case, I'd like to, to make sure that your planner does give proper attention to the potential impact on the school system.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Corso, sorry, Mr. Pacillo, you were just asking questions pertaining to possibly stores for bicycles, and you indicated that there might be some community bikes on the property for the residents to use. Um, is there a similar thought given by you to perhaps a demand might require for a Zipcar or a community car?
So we, we, you know, and some of our other projects, we implemented something called the Zipcar in New Jersey, they're not that familiar to, to the residents. Basically, it's a car, like a, a permanent rental that stays on site, it's available to all the residents, you basically buy time, you, you can buy an hour a month, or an hour a year, whatever, whatever the program is that you, you wish to or what your need is. It's generally not used for short trips, it's generally used for people to go see their parents, or go see their friends, or take, so we would, we would, uh, make a space and a consideration for a Zipcar, and we think it's a great idea, that coupled with the commuter lounge, uh, also coupled with the demographics, we think would work out really great.
And it could be used by someone, for example, that you might approve by lease, to have no vehicle at all, correct?
It could be used by anybody who lives in the building, it's, it's, it's building specific, it's resident specific, it would, the car is only available to the people in that.
Stick your credit card in?
Uh, just program, you, you buy behind, and, you know, you deserve the car, and you take it when you need it, so, uh, I think it works very well. It works very well for people who don't own a car, and, you know, they commute to the city, or they commute to Hoboken, they commute to Jersey City. But locally, they wanna go to CVS, or they wanna go to Shopper's, they don't need to, they don't need to own a car, they go, they can take the bikes, and they can take it over, or they can take the Zipcar. So it works. You know, we, it's been working on the buildings.
Any other questions by members of the board?
Just one last question, the car center, do you have any rough idea at this point how much equipment you plan to put into that business center?
Well, what we can ship, out of the exact script of the city, hang on a second, commuter lounge, it's four or five machines.
Four to five, that's gonna be enough to service all of your, your residents in this structure?
Well, we think so, the, the, it would be open twenty-four hours a day, available to the residents only, obviously. So some people are up at five, some people are up at twelve, so forty-two, what we're thinking is more like singles. We don't think that the demand for, will be more than five every time. I mean, we build, we build buildings in the city with eighty-five units with five machines in it.
The business center is rather small, two hundred square feet, so you're looking at a square fourteen feet across, it's a rather small room.
Yeah, like you said, five machines.
More people bumping into each other in that room.
We, we have not come up with a layout for the gym yet, but.
I'm sure, Mariana, if you don't mind, um, since we've spoken a little, it's mentioned about, um, mostly trying to bring residents that are looking more to commute instead of drive, whether that be to the grocery stores, or the Zipcar that stays on the actual property, cycling somewhere, or possibly taking transportation. Is that something that was discussed with the residents and their concerns about having, um, cars, uh, traffic increasing in that area? That these amenities to the residents would minimize that concern for them?
Absolutely, in fact, uh, during, one of, during the first meeting, I know I mentioned it, uh, to all of the residents that spoke tonight, they were all present, um, except for Mr. Mafucci, but he's on a conference call. And in particular, I recall, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ramirez thought it was a fantastic idea, the Zipcar idea, he, he seemed to be very in favor of it. And, um, yeah, so we did discuss these particulars, and I believe when they, they suggested we switch, get rid of the store and, and put the gym there, we were happy to, to do that, and I think they're pleased with that accommodation.
But it, but it was explained to them that, that concern of increase in traffic may not necessarily be factual because of the demographics that are being considered for this development.
Absolutely.
And actually not really folks that drive.
Correct. We explained the type of person that we're trying to get at the project, absolutely.
Thank you.
But don't hear it again through the testimony that may be presented, uh, next time.
Actually, on Franklin Avenue is also public transportation, that takes you all the way over to Light Rail and North, and all the other way, all the way to Saco.
This is the same custom that moves to Hoboken, and the same custom that moves to Jersey City. You know, my daughters live in, you know, I, I'm from the Melly Bell area, you know, born and raised in this area. My kids move to Hoboken, they commute to the city from Hoboken, they would love to, now, now, all of a sudden Bloomfield's a hot town, everybody's running to Bloomfield.
Because of the train.
Because of the train. So our customer, the same custom that's moving to Hoboken, who can't afford thirty-five hundred, or doesn't wanna pay thirty-five hundred dollars a month. It's professionals, it's young people, and it's people like us that no, no longer need that big space. And we see it every day, it's small, this is the, this is the target size apartment. Everything new in Jersey City, you don't see big apartments there, there's no, they're that, they're that big, that's it.
Any other questions by members of the board of the witness, either witness, or any other questions by members of the public, uh, either witness, since he testified after he was questioned, huh? All right, then what we'll do is, and we're not gonna have any more witnesses, we'll adjourn this meeting to August second, which is our next meeting date. And everyone in the audience, and Ms. Perna and her client, will know this will be the first case on the agenda, at the next one.
It won't have to be noticed, anybody, correct?
No.
Do we need extension of time at all?
I, I think you'll have to give wave it, because this has been delayed a number of months.
Just wave.
Just wave it.
Wave it.
Wave, okay, very good. So you'll be the first on the agenda next month, so everybody knows. Be here at seven o'clock on the second, okay? All right, motion to.
Oh, wait, we have to.
Resolution to be re-oralized, get them out of the room.
The answer is.
I do sign.
Matter of Blunt and Rota's rebellion, one thirty-three Franklin Avenue, application CV two thousand eighteen zero three. Russo.
Yes.
Casa. Bellotto.
Yes.
Valerio.
Yes.
Matter of North Jersey Advertising, two two nine Main Street, application number CV two thousand eighteen zero five. Matter of North Jersey advertising, two-two-nine Main Street, application number CB two thousand eighteen zero five. Russo.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Bolado, Delversia.
Yes. Motion to adjourn. Adjourn?